Causing good trouble.
No, that wasn't me. There's no noise over here.
I think that's just an echo on one of the others. It could be mine. Good evening, everyone and members of the public. My name is Malley Rosado, and I am the council president for the city of Hartford. I am calling to order this committee of the whole meeting today, December 1st. First of all, I want to wish, uh, hope and wish that everyone had a great Thanksgiving and that we're all practicing social distancing, washing our hands. This evening, we have one resolution on the agenda. And let me first start by introducing the members of our panel. And I'm just gonna go just by how we have them on our screen that I view them. First is Councilman John Gale, Councilman Josh Mixum, Councilwoman Marilyn Rosetti, Councilman James Sanchez, Councilman Nick LeVron, Councilwoman Shirley Sargent. We also have Councilman Clark, our Majority Leader, TJ Clark. We have our Town Clerk, Noel McGregor. We also have our Corporation Council, Howard Rifkin. We have Susan Gundermann, the reentry specialist from the city of Hartford. Also, our Assistant David Grant, who works for City Council. Also on our line is Edward Andrews and, let's see here, Brian Sullivan. Thank you all for joining. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read what the resolution says on the agenda. This resolution is quite long, so I'm gonna give a brief, three, a brief whereas, and then I'm going to turn it over to Susan Gundermann. So this resolution is urging the adoption and utilization of people's first language with respects to people with criminal records in all legislation, cos sponsorship memos, reports, policies, and other documents. This was introduced under the 2020 Agenda. And the first three as, like I said, this resolution is quite long, but the first three as start with today, there are more than 1.5 million Americans incarcerated in state and federal prisons and an additional 2.2 million in jail. And whereas one in three adults have been arrested by the age of 23 with communities of colors, LGBTQ, and individuals and people suffering from abuse or mental illness being disappropriately affected. And whereas it is estimated that between 70 million and 100 million or about in three Americans have some type of criminal record. A recent analysis of statewide data found that 61% of men and 21% of women who had utilized shelter services in Connecticut within the past three years had also spent time in a Connecticut jail or prison. In the greater Hartford region, approximately 2,524 people are released from prison or jail annually. And so the first two resolves of this resolution is that the Court of Common Counsel of the city of Hartford recognize that language that is not people-first obstructs the integration, inclusion, participation, and respect of justice-involved individuals. And be it further that the Court of Common Counsel of the city of Hartford urges all agencies and departments, both executive and judiciary, to adopt first people language with respects to people with criminal records in all its official written voice, audiovisual, and sign communications. And so when we talk about first people language, and I'm gonna give two examples. Instead of referring to someone as a formerly incarcerated person, we would refer to it as a returning resident or justice-involved, not a felon or offender, or a person on parole or a person under supervision, not a parolee or parishioner, currently incarcerated person, not a convict or an inmate. So with that said, I am going to turn it over to Susan Gundermann, who is the city of Hartford's reentry specialist, to speak a little bit about this. Thank you for taking the time and joining us this evening, Susan.
Thank you, President Rosado, and thank you to all the members of the city council. I so appreciate this opportunity to speak before you this evening about person-first language. It's so important that we recognize that what we say matters. How we say it can impact someone tremendously. And I have two individuals here who will speak to that in a few minutes. But 95% of everyone incarcerated will be coming home. And so how do we want people to come home to our community? We want them to feel welcomed. We want them to come home with dignity and respect. And when we use language that is not person-first, it is demoralizing. It carries on that stigma. The men and women that have been incarcerated or are involved in the criminal justice system, the stigma of their record far outlasts any sentence they serve. And so, again, we continue to put barriers up and put obstacles in their way when they're trying to come back to the community and be able to reintegrate and turn their lives around. And so how we treat people, how we view people, starts with how we speak about people. And I think it's so important. Over the years, I've been conscious about my own language and how I speak about people who have been formerly incarcerated. And it's important. I even, you know, in my conversations, I have a, I work closely with the Department of Corrections. And so when I'm speaking to them, even in meetings, I'll say to them, you know, can we please use, you know, people that are in your custody? So that, again, the word inmate and con and all those, you know, derogatory terms are really dehumanizing and demoralizing to people. And so I think it's important how we speak about them. And people who are closest to that are those that have lived experience. And I think they can speak to the best of how it impacts them. Many of them who have experienced trauma have mental health addiction. You know, do we all want to be judged on our worst day? And even men and women have made poor decisions and poor choices in their life, and they should not be judged and being called anything but, again, individuals who have made some mistakes. And so with that, we have no opposition. The city of Hartford has no opposition. The mayor's office has no opposition to this resolution and are in support, as am I, using person-first language. And so I just thank you all for the opportunity to just speak a few minutes about that. And I can turn it over to, I believe, Brian Sullivan. We'll go with him. I think he's first on the agenda. I think David, you said Brian is first on the agenda. So Brian Sullivan is someone who has lived experience. And Brian, I'm not gonna, you share what you want to share. I will turn that over to you. But Brian is very passionate. He's been working hard. And he's a true advocate for the men and women who have been justice-involved. So Brian, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. City Council and Sue, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of this resolution. I always like to start off by saying, like, I did what I did. I'm guilty and I was sentenced. I completed that sentence. I did everything they wanted me to do. I did everything I was supposed to do. Upon returning back to the city of Hartford, a city which I love, a city which I think is the greatest city in the Northeast, and I only say that because this is where I want to do the work I want to do. And it goes with what you guys are trying to do here tonight. I've read this resolution about 15 times. And I am, I'm really excited about the language that's in this resolution. And I say that because it softens the blow. And at least with this language, it will open up an opportunity to have the conversation. And I'm gonna give you an example of how, if this language doesn't pass, how it impacts us. So I just completed a 28-year sentence. I've been home 15 months. While I was incarcerated, I completed every program in Department of Corrections. I facilitated every program, wrote curriculum. And I say all that to say this, I had a plan upon when I was released, what I was gonna do. Since that day, I've been doing it. I'm in school and I have been a full-time student. I work with the ENET program and go to college. I'm working. I'm involved in programs. I went for an apartment, and the landlord asked me. The first thing he asked me was, are you an ex-con? So I had to say, yeah, right? The language in this resolution would soften the blow and would at least allow individuals to approach the table in a different manner, right? We know there's collateral consequences due to records with people on probation, with people on parole. The recidivism rate is a high 70% within a five-year span for those released. As Sue said, 95% of people are gonna be released. What do we want these individuals to really do? Really, what do we want them to do? Not the words, not, we're just saying it just, you know, because it's the right thing to say. But what we really want them to do when they return? Housing is an issue. Food is an issue, especially during Corona, especially during what's going on right now. And so I think this language opens up the opportunity for not just the city of Hartford, but the state and maybe even the Northeast. This could be the catalyst that helps bring about the change that reduces that recidivism rate, that brings that down for those that really did some work inside and come home and really want to do something with their lives and not continue in that vicious cycle of going right back in, in the revolving door. This will open up that opportunity and help them out. And I could go on and on, and who knows, I could talk. I could speak on this. I'm very passionate about it. I spent a total of 31 years of my life incarcerated due to my poor choices and decisions. Nobody else is. There's no one to blame, but I've completed that. But yet, I'm still, every day, something comes about to where there's a negative consequence because of that, even though I'm doing all the right things. And I think that this is a definite huge step in the right direction and definitely could bring about some change. So I'm thankful and grateful that you guys are even considering this. And I really hope this passes.
Thank you, Brian. And now Edward Andrews is with us. And Edward, again, I'll let you share what you want to share with city council, but I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thanks a lot, Sue, for even writing me on it. My experiences, my experiences, I've just finished doing 22 years myself in prison. And I was one of those luck, not lucky, but fortunate guys who, when I was released, I went to Open Heart. I see rambling on the line. And they had, I'm just gonna put it out there. They opened their arms and welcomed me as if I wasn't an ex-offender. But outside of that, the language means so much how people see us. When we talking about language, we talking about like, I don't know if anybody heard of Howard Beck. Howard Beck was the sociologist who created dislabeling theory. And what dislabeling theory do, it affluents us. It has the potential to influence us to be what you want us, see us to be. So if we could become, I mean, I think that it'd be more sensitive when you just give us a language that could empower us. I mean, everybody's not, everybody might can't just accept, you know, those negative views of language as, you know, society gives. I mean, I could because, I don't mean. But for others, I think that you have to be very sensitive to how you come across others because it could bring us in a rut. And then we want to act out that, the way you see us. It's, it becomes quite complicated of us to get out that, that phase. After doing, after doing that 22 years, you know, I'm from New York. So they sent me to Hartford. And although I was like, I was welcoming, being welcome at Open Heart, I always had to go out and I had to catch a bus and all of that. I didn't know how to use a bus pass. And when the first time I tried to, you know, put the bus pass in the slot, when the bus driver, you know, ain't got, I mean, Bill Hall, like, he think I was trying to pretend or put a show on side of the bus, like, if I knew what I was doing. I didn't know what I was doing. It's this type of negative concepts that one could have on us that can make us, you know, act out on it or behave in a way where that's criminal thinking. So I agree with you with this counsel, Ms. Rosado. And I think that the language, it has an effect on others. And some of us, it don't. But I think to begin with it, we have to be very sensitive on the language that we use with guys because, you know, we've been abandoned. We've been, no, isolated. We've been hurt. And so when you say some more hurt things to us, hurt people hurt people. And I don't, I don't, I don't think there's no more further to say. I just think that what you got going on right here with the language, I think it begins with the language in our reality. And I thank you for having, having me, Sue. I just don't, I'm not the woman that wrong with it because there's a lot of fluff to come with that, and I ain't with that type where my experiences were and is.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing your story, both Brian and Eric.
And by the way, me and Brian, me and Brian did do our time together, you know, out in Osborne. And it's good to see him on this side of the wall because on the other side, we always had a plan. And exactly where we at right now, but where we at, we ain't where we yesterday.
I applaud you both. Congratulations to both. And I know how hard it is, you know, when this resolution was written. A lot of thought was, was, you know, taken upon. And so we want to be very mindful of how it was written. And, you know, there is a lot of opportunity for growth, but we have to start somewhere. And, you know, this is one of my passions, and I'll publicly say it. My father spent 32 years in federal prison. And I went through the whole process with him, never gave up on him. My brother decided to follow his steps, went to prison a couple of times. I lost him to an overdose in year 2000. But, you know, if there was one thing that my father said to me, he said, when you're growing up as a teenager, your parents are there for you. And he said to me, you know, you have a decision to make. You could follow my steps and end up six feet under, or you could go the other way and become a woman and go through the right path. So it was six feet under jail or the right path. Today, I thank God that I listened to him. So when it comes to listening to your stories, I am never gonna relate because I haven't done the time, but I sure did it with my father. So thank you both for sharing your story. I know it's very hard, but I have a couple of questions. You could ask them if you want. But, you know, you can always tell me. I don't want to talk about that next question. And so my question to you, Edward, and I'll go back to Brian, is I know that you said that a lot of your obstacles, and one was housing. Could you mention a couple of other ones? And I know that you said that you did go to the Open Heart. But today, you being a formerly incarcerated person, do you feel as though that the Department of Corrections could have done something a little bit different so that when you got out, you knew, you know, how to put that ticket in when you got out of the bus? So if you're on a panel and you could speak to, I'd like to see three changes. So the men or the women that can come out, don't have to go through these obstacles. What would they be?
To tell you the truth, I gotta be quite honest with you. I could say that although I've been cursed and been locked up, facing 85 years, I got 33. I did 22 out of that. On the other side of the corner, I've been blessed. And why I say that? Because for me, who I am, jail, please don't take it the wrong way, but it's boring me because of everything I was doing for my population. And I was just happy because, let me tell you one thing. Like, before I came home, it was 10 years before I was coming home. And everybody asked, they said, Boo. And I think Brian could verify that. Boo, what the first thing you want to do when you get out? That's what they call me, Boo. Excuse me for my own nickname. But that's what they call me. And they asked me what the first thing I want to do when I get out? And I said, the first thing I want to do is touch a tree. I touched a tree? You don't want to be a little girl? You want to do that? Because I was so focused, you know? And let me tell you how God works. When I got out, he sent me right to Open Heart. And if you know anything about Open Heart, they got a big lumberyard with millions of trees in it. And I thought I was in paradise. You know what I'm saying? But my struggle was a real struggle. Like, you know, I came home, when I came to jail, we had beepers. And when I was in prison, my intervention came in because I was like, what got me here? And what got me really here was me suffering from some type of trauma. I come from a broken home. I come from a broken home in Brooklyn, which was the most violent projects in Brooklyn in the 70s and the 80s. And we're both, and, you know, I had a close friend of mine that at a young age got shot down to my arms. Both my parents passed away the same year, in the same room, in the same hospital, at the same age, with the same doctor. Both of them died at the age of 43, five months apart. And so my heart turned cold next to theirs. I just didn't see no other way out but, you know, the street. That lasted only for nine months because I went to New Haven, Connecticut. Something happened here. And then I was facing 85 years. And out of that 85, I got it down to 33. So what I'm trying to tell the whole panel is if we do not address the symptoms of this trauma, it would be more likely that we end up where we be ending up at. And that's the only reason why I began, you know, my own program dealing with this, of course, dealing with this trauma and form issues that if you live in the inner city, we all face.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Brian, I'm gonna go right back to you, but Nakia Wright just joined us. Welcome, Nakia. Is it not? Am I pronouncing it right?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
So did you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, I can do that. I'm actually in the store. I was shopping for my guy's birthday tomorrow. But I'll step out so I'm not, like, in the store being loud. Just give me two seconds. Yeah, I was like, I didn't know if I should just start talking.
Yeah. So, no, it's okay. So you did, you did read the resolution, obviously. And so I would like to know what your opinion about the resolution is, how it makes you feel, and a little bit about yourself.
Okay. So, yeah. My story's a little funny because I'm recently, what am I trying to say? Okay, so I was incarcerated from 2014 until 2018. And at the time, I was struggling myself with substance abuse, PCP, broken home, like the gentleman was sharing. However, my mom at the time, when I was incarcerated, was a corrections officer herself, just at another facility, as well as my older brother, who is now a warden. And so my trials in the system was horrible. I had to really be proactive, especially up against a lot of the staff that knew that about me. And so just the mental drainage of being a female incarcerated and just being shunned upon as a woman, not just an African-American woman, all women were treated very poorly in the system from, you know, being called bitches and just, you know, the sexual things that we were exposed to, you know, guards being inappropriate. It was just a lot that if you weren't mentally prepared for it, you had to become prepared. And a lot of times, like myself, I've returned. That 2014 sentence, that was actually my longest sentence there. And I just felt like at that time, I was 27, and it was just time for me to address my addiction and, you know, just not make excuses for myself. Once you kind of see, like, the back and forth of, for one, Connecticut only has the one woman's prison here. So once you've become a familiar face, it's not so much about support because they kind of just look at you like, okay, she's the statistic of a revolving door. I do feel like the substance abuse program there was beneficial if you took advantage of it. But from my own experiences, that's why I speak on just having a mother and a brother working in the system because it kind of worked against me at times. I felt like I was more judged harshly when I shared my most personal things with the counselors. I felt more like the counselors were more, or less like a prison guard. They were very nasty at times instead of being more of a counselor for you. So that sometimes is discouraging for women who really want and desire that change, but they just don't have the connection there to actually, you know, be consistent on the outside. I am gonna say, though, when I did move to the reentry center, that's when I connected with Terry, and I was able to make good support for going home. Because it's more along the lines in there of survival of the fittest or, you know, the belly of the beast, as they would call it. It's very much survival mode in there if you're not trying to really educate yourself on how to advocate for yourself when you come home. And since being home, I've done well. I can say I've remained clean since I've been home. But I'm very much like an ambitious go-getter type of person. And so I'm always trying to see, you know, what else can I do? I actually was just coming, I'm in Massachusetts now because I'm trying to do like a aesthetic electrologist training program that they have available out here in Massachusetts. So I'm just always trying to do something that will help elevate me and give me more credentials considering my criminal background. It hasn't helped me up from being employed many places, but it has definitely been an issue for me apartment-wise. To the point, I had to get my apartment in someone else's name if I wanted to live somewhere decent, a quality home for myself. I had to, you know, pay someone to get the apartment in their name and all those obstacles. That becomes a hassle. But then that just makes me want to go more into working on my credit. And, you know, I became a credit restoration specialist so I can build my credit up and actually get my own house. And so it just all depends if you look at the glass as half-full and you don't see the opportunity for growth or you see it as half-empty and you just allow yourself to continue to struggle and, you know, not utilize the few outlets that you have.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story. And I will keep you so that you can continue your shopping. I wish you the best of luck, and we're here. A phone call away if you ever need anything, okay? Thank you for sharing your story.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we're back to Brian. Brian, thank you for being patient. Um, if you could share a little bit about, um, your story and how you feel about this resolution?
All right, and I want to answer that question that you asked about the three things in the Department of Corrections.
Absolutely.
So, okay, so I'm, I'll give you a little bit of background of my story and then I'll answer the three questions. So, um, you know, as both of them said, which is, and it's kind of ironic because I know of her mom and her brother, um. Okay, I come from a broken home, absolutely. I came from, I was, you know, at twelve, I was a substance abuser, um, got caught up in a whole bunch of nonsense, made a lot of horrible choices and bad decisions, which led me to prison. Um, I, I, I want to tell you, and it's something, I created a program inside called Champs. Um, and one of the things I would always say is, I'm never gonna sit here and tell you I'm a product of my environment and/or circumstances because I'm a product of my choices and decisions. My mother was a dope queen, my father wasn't there. All right, I could have chose the other side. Uh, someone who, someone who I know, who is actually a friend of mine, is Angel Kuro, who is now the director for the Department of Corrections. And I would always use him as an example. I'd say we both grew up in the South End of Hartford. We both went through some things as, as kids. He made a decision to take a right, I made a decision to take a left. Like, I won't blame anybody for my actions. I did what I did, it happened. Uh, my childhood was horrible, absolutely. But I know some individuals, I know a man right now who grew up who had it just as bad as me and he just got his PhD. And so like, I'm not looking to cast blame or, 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 or for sympathy on that level. What I, all I'm interested in is now that me and other individuals such as this young lady, such as Edward, have come out and are doing the right thing and are doing what we are supposed to be doing as citizens that were treated the same. And in your legislation, so I'm, I'm gonna connect this with the question you asked about the three things if I was able to sit on a panel because I had this conversation with a judge in December of twenty eighteen and she asked me, what would I do if I could make changes? I think one of the biggest issues is, and, and a piece of the, uh, resolution that says that the Court of Common Counsel of City Department urges adoption and utilization of people-first language in all legislation. I believe that if the state and the cities could approach this holistically and that the money that's allocated for reentry matched that the services rendered to the individuals that needed it, then things could definitely change, right? So if I could change some things, the one thing I would definitely change is there needs to be a bigger impact before release. So I was about my business when I was inside and everyone knows this. I still deal with the Department of Corrections. I have conversations with them frequently. I, 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 my, some of my friends are still officers and counselors, people that helped change my life. Because these were the people I around and I happen to have some bad experiences with people inside, but I have to say, I've had some great experiences. And because of them, I'm able to do what I'm able to do now because they helped me with that. But the services that are offered before release are talked about, but they're never put in practice upon release. So what good is it? I'm gonna give you the perfect example. There was a young man that was going home on a Friday and he sat with me and the unit manager wanted me to speak with the young man and, and pick his brain to see where he was gonna be at. And I asked him, I said, what you gonna do this time? What's gonna be different when you're released? He said, I got a plan this time. He said, I got some resources out there and I'm gonna be able to do this, that, that, and the third. I always say, what good is it if an individual who EOSs, which means end of sentence, is dropped off at Jennings Row, at, at, at Weston Street at the county jail? And he has no money, he has no place to go, and you tell him, we have a coat for you, but it's in Middletown. How does he get the coat? The other side of this, I want to say, I'm not saying that, you know, all this money should just be put on us and it's for us and you, as individuals such as yourself and other people are out here working every day and busting their butt to take care of their family. But what I am saying is, if we expect people upon release to just jump back into mainstream society, everybody has to be on the same page. So the reentry center inside corrections, and I left, I went home from the Second Chance Unit that Malloy helped create and Sue's part of inside Sibolski. And we talked about a lot of great resources that are out here. But I'm gonna tell you, my reality is that when I came home, I didn't see all that, right? And that could be because of language that is misinterpreted or, or whatever the situation may be. But if the Department of Corrections, if the state and the cities were all on the same page and approached this all together on one accord, then things can definitely change. And I'm not saying everybody inside, we all know this, right? Let's just be honest. Everybody inside doesn't have a plan to come out here and do the right thing. That's just a fact. But I know a few people that are in there and were doing what I was doing, what Andrew was doing, that are home now. I know a couple guys that just completed fifty-year sentences. They're in the New Haven area and they're doing wonderful things with Ali Wazuski, who's the reentry coordinator for the US government. Like, I know individuals that want to do it, but they're running into hurdles. And again, as Andrew said, I believe that this language will at least be the catalyst that gets the conversation even flowing harder so that we can make some changes and so that, you know, progress can be made.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, for sharing your stories. Are, uh, there any, uh, questions from any council members? Councilwoman Rosetti?
First of all, I want to thank, um, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Andrews. And I don't know, is, is she still on the line?
That's right.
That's right, is she still on the line? You know, I want to thank you. Oftentimes, we ask people of things to, you know, bare their soul and I appreciate that. And Mr. Andrews, you know, made a reference and I am at the Open Heart and unfortunately, I hear these stories day in, day out, you know, hundreds of times over the last nine years. Men who come through our doors and do everything they're supposed to do and more and are denied the rights that we say will happen once they are released. It's a travesty. It, it pains me daily. Um, people who you say, do this, you'll have a job, do this, you'll have opportunities for housing, do this, your life will change. And, and it does not happen. So it has to start somewhere and I always say, language is powerful. And, um, I'm proud of what we're trying to do here. Certainly, there are many more, and, and Mr. Andrews knows this, there are many more ideas that, you know, we have or we could do. But I appreciate the start here and it is really something that, you know, means a lot to me personally. And, um, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rosetti. Uh, Councilman LeBron?
I want to thank, uh, all, all three folks for the courage to be able to do this um, and, and speak to us. It's not easy. Um, it's not easy to share your story and it's not easy to, um, you know, be honest. But, uh, I appreciate your efforts because what you are, what you guys did today, you're essentially lobbyists, right? You lobbied us in order to create policy and policy change. So put that on your resume, uh, that you're a lobbyist. I'll co-sign it. And, um, and thank you for reiterating the fact that words matter. Um, thank you very much.
Councilman Sanchez? Headed by Councilwoman Surgeon and Councilwoman Ms. Stone.
Yes, uh, thank you through you, Madam President. Yeah, uh, Mr. Andrews and Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Rice, I really appreciate, uh, hearing your stories. I, I appreciate having the courage to, uh, to be on this, um, uh, and this special meeting that we have here and, uh, to endorse the resolution, uh, that our council president authored. And I, and I appreciate that council president for putting in such a resolution. I'm a true believer that anywhere we all go, um, worse will hurt us, uh, whether it's directly or indirectly. And when you have a title of a doctor or an attorney, everyone looks up to you. But when they hear that you're a felon or you've been incarcerated or so forth, they, they look down on you without even knowing who the person is about with, without knowing the history of that person. Uh, I truly support this resolution and I hope that not only will this resolution change at the city level, that the state will follow suit and it will also follow suit throughout the Northeast as Mr. Sullivan mentioned. Um, and to your point, Mr. Sullivan, you're right. Uh, you know, there's, I, I've heard many conversations and unfortunately, you know, this has been going on for years where, you know, souls were dropped off. Once they left the, the term in, you know, from being in prison, they, they're just dropped off in the middle of nowhere. Um, you know, at the outskirts of the city or on a, you know, late evening or afternoon on a day where everything is closed and there's no help. So, you know, I also want to, uh, you know, thank Marilyn Rosetti for doing such a tremendous job and helping, uh, most, you know, quite, quite often men um, who, who lands on her doorsteps. And Susan, thank you so much for what you're doing as well. Without you and the team, I think, uh, you know, we would have, you know, the same issues that we had five years ago. So thank you, uh, everyone, and I, and I will be supporting this resolution for sure.
Thank you, Councilman Sanchez. Councilwoman, uh, Surgeon?
Sorry to get off mute. Um, just want to thank the, um, the gentlemen and the young lady who did the presentation. I totally agree with, um, uh, the councilmen that this, they are lobbyists. So one of the things I will come, I, I'm so proud of that because one of the things of, um, uh, people coming back into their community is they don't do, is they need to get their rights, they have gotten their voting rights back. As long as they are not on, um, you know, parole or confined, they can get their voting rights back. So gentlemen and ladies who are lobbying our council members here, this is one of the greatest thing you can do for yourself is if you live in the city of Hartford, is go down to register a voter's office and get your voting rights back so you can continue to lobby us. So I am so proud that you gentlemen and the young ladies here tonight to lobby us on behalf of this resolution. So a heartfelt thank you and wish you all the best. And I know you guys are gonna make it. Thank you so very much for doing a presentation with us tonight.
I'd just like to say one thing, thank you. I'm fifty-five years old now. I went inside of jail at the age of twenty-five, came out fifty, right? This is my first year, my first year that I voted. And I felt
Me too.
I felt like I'm a man, you know what I'm saying? And so, I felt, I felt, I felt like a human being.
Thank you so very much for doing that.
Congratulations. Councilman Ms. Stone?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I also, of course, I want to thank the three of you for sharing. And I, I really appreciate what Councilman LeBron said that, that you are lobbyists. And I hope that, you know, what we're doing today, what, what this resolution does is an important step, but it's a little step, right? In terms of all of the challenges that folks face when they're coming back home. And I know that, you know, e- each of you in telling your stories has spoken about those challenges in terms of finding work, finding housing, all those different kind of things. And, you know, one of the things that I've always felt, we do best as, as legislators, as leaders, when we center the folks who have the most needs, who are facing the most challenges. And I think you three have been through it and it seems like you're getting past it. But that means that you have knowledge that, that a lot of us might not have. So I hope that you'll keep lobbying us, not just specifically about the language we use, but also about housing, policing, all of the things that can make the city better for folks who have gone through what you went through. Because if we make it better for y'all, I think we're gonna make it better for everybody. So thank you much. Reach out to me and I know my colleagues feel the same way, like call us up, email us whenever, whenever we're doing right or doing wrong. Thank you much.
Thank you. Councilman Clark?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Um, thank you for a great presentation, uh, to my friend and I would say my colleague, Sue Gundeman. Um, we do go way back and, um, I'm glad that we continue to work together. Um, such a timely, uh, presentation resolution regarding the era that we are in right now. And, uh, Sue, this will do your ears good. I, I had a call yesterday regarding, um, uh, the Day of Empathy, uh, for, uh, next year. So I will be reaching out to you and the rest of your team, uh, as we continue to plan on a, um, Day of Empathy, um, uh, event. It will be virtual again, uh, but, uh, I know it will be phenomenal with all these, uh, new people that you have, uh, that yes, are lobbyists, uh, because anytime that you can really stand and represent yourself through many tragedies, uh, you do a very good job of advocating for rights. And it's time to let people know who have been subject to the system about their rights and how their rights can be reinstated. Uh, because that how, that is how people have been taken advantage of for too many years, uh, regarding giving out false information and not understanding how they could have been voting for such a long time ago. So thank you very much. Again, very timely. It's always great to see you and hear, uh, continue on and the work that you're doing. And I definitely look forward to, uh, uh, working with your team, uh, in the very near future.
Thank you. Councilman Gail?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Uh, and certainly I want to, I want to, uh, throw some kudos your way as a co-sponsor of this resolution. I'm very proud to join, uh, you, Council President, uh, uh, and applaud you for, uh, for putting this forward. Uh, and to Councilman Sanchez's point, um, uh, I'm, I'm proud of a council that's been a leader in many ways in initiating, uh, legislation, other legislation that has then set the standard for the state. And I hope that this, um, uh, would also be, uh, a piece of legislation that other cities and towns in, in the state of Connecticut would take up. Because language is very important and language is very powerful. And, uh, I think we've got another example of this coming, uh, coming forward uh, in some other ordinance that we're going to be, uh, looking at. So, uh, and, uh, and, uh, certainly a shout out to all those who testified today. Uh, greatly appreciate hearing, uh, your stories and cementing for all of us um, that this is an important thing and that we should be doing it. So I, I fully support it, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman, um, Councilman Gail. Councilman Sanchez?
I'd like to make a motion that we send this resolution to council favorably.
I'd like to second that.
Second.
Wonderful. Councilman LeBron?
Yeah, I just, I, uh, I was gonna second it. I don't think you could triple it, so.
You can quadruple it, you can.
Um, so my, a motion has been made and, um, probably second. Um, all, uh, all those in favor, I think, if I by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, any abstentions? Wonderful. Um, the ayes have it and this resolution is being sent back to council with a favorable recommendation. Again, uh, Sue, thank you for everything that you do, um, on a daily basis.
Thank you, Sue.
Appreciate it, um, to our, our panelists, our lobbyists. Um, we do have your names and phone numbers, so I will be reaching out, um, to you, um, uh, to continue this great conversation. I think like, um, one of you said, um, this is the start of something, um, big. Um, I am extremely passionate about this. I will, we will, as council body, reach out, uh, to state legislation um, and hopefully, um, get to where we need to be. Um, you know, and I want to remind everyone, you know, humanity, this is what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to lift each other up and help each other. And so, uh, respect one another's and we cannot lose humanity. So with that said, I wanted to thank the members of the public um, who, uh, were here with us, uh, this evening. And once again, please, if you can, get tested, social distance, um, and continue to enjoy your holidays. Um, good night, everyone. Um, with this, I'm calling this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.